We'll call the April 16, 2007 Knox County Commission to Order. Clerk, if you'll call the rowboys.
Mr. Jordan.
Here.
Mr. Strickland.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Bowles.
Here.
Commissioner Norman.
Here.
Commissioner Ivan Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Kate.
Here.
Commissioner Trammell.
Here.
Commissioner Hammond.
Here.
Commissioner Frank Luthold.
Here.
Commissioner Kaywood.
Here.
Commissioner Lambert.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Tinkston.
Here.
We have all nineteen members present. Before we do the devotional this month, it'll be by Commissioner Larry Smith, but before we do it, I'd like to ask everyone to stand. Let's have a moment of silence for the shooting victims' families and everybody involved down at Virginia Tech. Commissioner Smith?
Be seated. I'm gonna preach a little bit, Commissioner. I'm gonna have my fellow commissioners help me on this. Commissioner Lambert, if you'll hold the good book here for me a minute. Commissioner Ballard, or Huddleston, if you'll hold that basketball. Today, we're going to be recognizing, I think, the Lady Balls a little bit later, and we just finished up with basketball season. So what I thought I would do, Mr. Chairman, I did a little correlation between basketball and the Bible. And as you know, that's my hobby, is basketball. What I have here is a set of authentic rules from 1899, when the game of basketball was invented by Dr. Naismith up in Springfield, Massachusetts. And they correlate quite a bit with what's in the Bible. In the Bible, you'll find that man has his rules, and then Mr. Naismith had his. Both the Bible and the basketball, as you know, are made out of leather. And the Bible has its rules in the Ten Commandments. The basketball is for a season; the Bible is for life. With the basketball, you play with it, and with the Bible, it has the answers of life in it. And the basketball that we have here, I have that signed by the grandson of Dr. Naismith, inventor of basketball. That was signed by his grandson. This was inspired by the man of God. So let us have a quick prayer, and then we'll have the pledge. Our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for East Tennessee, a place of its beauty. We thank you for basketball here and what it means to this town, what it can mean in our lives. But we want you to take us today, as government officials, and give us the wisdom as to what we should do for Knox County. Because, Lord, this is a beautiful place. We're so thankful that we live here, so thankful that you've observed of our land and our resources that you've given us and our county's money that we have to be empowered over and be with each commissioner and give us good judgment and good wisdom and be with all of our elected officials throughout Knox County. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
If anyone will please stand, the pledge to the flag will be led by Commissioner Josh Jordan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan and Commissioner Smith. Okay, we're on amendments to the agenda. We have a request to remove, well, not to remove, but to bring Resolution 101, it's on page sixteen, close to the front as we can, for Mr. Braden with the code enforcement in Knox County. He needs to get out to the Habitat houses, so he's wanting us to move that up. Also, we have Eddie Manus, and we're gonna move you up just as quick as we can here. Commissioner Luthold.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if anybody wants to discuss, it's on page fifteen, there's two ordinances there, where both committees recommend it be deferred for thirty days. It would be Resolution 007-4103. That has to do with the convenient recycling centers and persons there, that was discussed in the committee, and also the next one, 104, on the stormwater management ordinance. We know we had a hearing this last week and other ones there, and both committees have said those be deferred, should be deferred to our next meeting, which is more than thirty days, but it's our next regular meeting. Unless somebody wants to discuss them today, I would just move that we just go ahead and move that we defer them to our next meeting unless somebody wants to have them discussed today.
Okay, if we have no objections? We didn't have objection. All right. Commissioner Ivan Harmon.
Yeah, I'd like to move the food policy report. Dwayne Gregg is here, and I'd like to move it up as quick as we could to. He's on open forum.
Where's it at on the agenda?
It's on open forum at the last. I'm gonna move him up.
Okay, if we have no objections to doing that? Okay. Commissioner Bowles, I think you want to remove from consent Resolution 102 and have it right after 101?
Yes, sir, if we could, please.
No, after Resolution 101.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I wish to make sure that 905 and 908 are not on consent. Are they off?
Okay. 905 and 906?
No, 905 and 908.
They're not on consent. Okay, Commissioner. Okay, also, we need to add Resolution 802 on page twelve. Also, we need to add two resolutions, and there'll be 408 and 409. I think you have a copy of them dealing with permanent maintenance of stormwater on Lot One and on Lot 70 and 71, so we'll add those two. Do we have any other amendments? Commissioner Kate?
I just wanted to point out, the ordinance on stormwater, I think Mr. Van De Veyt has scheduled four additional hearings. Have you scheduled those?
We've got the dates, Commissioner. We're still working to determine locations. In fact, here in a minute, I'll pass out a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that Arcadis and Tetra Tech made last week.
Okay, do we have any other amendments to the agenda? Seen none, the agenda's set. Clerk, if you'll do Ordinance 101 first.
It's on page sixteen. This is an ordinance repealing Article One in general, Section 10-1, Ordinance Number O-98-4-101 on 7/27/98. Article Two, Building Code, Section 10-31 and 10-32, Ordinance O-99-6-102, approved on 7/26/99. Article Four, Gas Code, Section 10-76, Article versus Housing Code, Section 10-91 and 10-92, Article Six, Mechanical Code, Section 10-106. Article Seven, Plumbing Code, Section 10-136. Article Nine, Swimming Pools, Division Two, Code, Section 10-216. Article Two, Fire Prevention Code, Section 30-31, 30-32. And Article Three, Life Safety Code, Section 30-56 and 30-57, Ordinance O-98-4-101, approved on 7/27/98, and adopting the 2006 International Building Code, IBC, with amendments. The 2006 International Fuel Gas Code, IFGC, with amendments. The 2006 International Property Maintenance Code, IPMC, with amendments. The 2006 International Mechanical Code, IMC, with amendments. The 2006 International Plumbing Code, IPC, with amendments. The 2006 International Fire Code, IFC, with amendments. The 2006 Life Safety Code, LSC, with amendments. The 2006 International Code Council Performance Code for Buildings and Facilities, ICCPC, with amendments. The 2006 International Existing Building Code, IEVC, with amendments. And the 2006 International Energy Conservation Code, IECC, with amendments. This is on second reading.
Okay, Intergovernmental?
Intergovernmental voted nine-zero to approve.
Finance Committee?
Finance voted nine-zero to approve. So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it. Okay, clerk, if you'll do Resolution or Resolution 102.
This is on page two. This is a resolution honoring Elisa Luna, principal of Enskip Elementary School.
Okay, Intergovernmental?
Intergovernmental voted nine-zero to approve.
Finance Committee?
Nine-zero to approve. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it. Mr. Bowles, you'll have the floor. Clerk, if you'll go ahead and read the resolution into the record, please.
Whereas Elisa Luna has served as principal of Enskip Elementary since 2004 in exemplary manner, and whereas Elisa Luna has greatly improved the quality of student learning at Enskip Elementary, and whereas Elisa Luna has been an outstanding leader in the Enskip community with her knowledge of curriculum and her ability to teach and guide children in a positive manner. Now therefore be it resolved by the Commission of Knox County as follows. The Commission of Knox County salutes Elisa Luna for her love and understanding of the children of Knox County and the tradition of excellence she has established with the teachers within Enskip School. Be it further resolved that this resolution is to take effect from and after its passage as provided by the Charter of Knox County, Tennessee, the public welfare requiring it.
Okay, Commissioner Bowles, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Moore. I'd just like to say this lady is a wonderful, wonderful, does a wonderful job as a principal. She is a leader in the Enskip community, and since she became the principal there, they have seen just a continuous improved scoring. She is looked upon by the entire community as a leader and a, most of all, I guess, someone who loves children. I just, I am very proud to say that I serve as a fellow administrator with her in Knox County.
Thank you all so much. I have to get back to work, but it's an honor to be a principal in Knox County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Have Adie, you want to come down from the Dogwood Arts?
On behalf of the Dogwood Arts Festival, we are very happy to be here today. We just completed festival on the square on this rainy weekend, cold rain, and we wanted to make a presentation on behalf of the Dogwood Arts Festival, board of directors, and the festival itself, to Knox County, Mayor Ragsdale, Chairman Moore, and all County Commission. And I am very fortunate to have the artist of the limited edition print for 2007. The limited edition print is "Spring in the City," and Mike Berry is the artist, and we would like to make this presentation to Knox County. Thank you, County Commission, for all you do for the Dogwood Arts Festival.
Yeah, thank you very much.
We split that up a week, a week here?
Yeah, you get it for a week, Mayor, and then I guess we'll hang it up for a week.
You might just put it in the hallway.
My house.
Yeah, at least. Okay, we'll have the report from Food Policy now.
I want to thank Dwayne for the work he does for the Food Policy Committee, and I know he's given out some, I think everybody should have in their packet, the report. And at this time, I thank Greg for, Dwayne, for doing what he does. Dwayne, you got the floor, buddy.
You'll give your name for the record.
My name's Dwayne Gregg. I serve as the Chair of the Knoxville Knox County Food Policy Council, and I would like to thank the County Commission for the allowance to serve and allowing us to make this presentation today, and especially for Ivan Harmon for serving on the Food Policy Council for the past many years. As Ivan said, we put a lot of information in the packet, so I just want to hit a couple of the highlights. Also, I know a lot of y'all are new members to County Commission. We try to come in front of the County Commission every year and make a presentation regarding what the Food Policy Council has done during the past year as far as annual reporting. The purpose of the Food Policy Council was established in 1982. The purpose is to continually monitor the food supply system in Knoxville and Knox County. This is everything from grocery stores to obesity issues, nutrition, mobile meals, cat buses, to make sure that it's getting elderly people to the right places to get groceries, farming, ag extension, just a little bit of everything. The next thing I just wanted to quickly bring your attention to is one of the things that we started doing several years ago, you'll have a 10-carat award booklet. Every December, we have this to recognize individuals and programs in Knox County that specifically have contributed benefiting, enhancing the food supply system in Knox County. At the very back, you'll see a list of all those people that you'll recognize that have done things over the years. The middle of the booklet is this year's winners. It's also a time for us to have some guest speakers to educate those who came this past year. There was about a hundred folks that attended, and so we had, Dr. Noe was one of the presenters talking about the food insecurity in Knox County. We also had Dr. Betsy Houghton from UT to talk about food monitoring, and then we also had Laura Born from Knox County Schools regarding the new wellness policy in Knox County. The next thing I just wanted to briefly cover, we did two reports this past year. One is on food security, and the other is after Hurricane Katrina came, then we did a report on how the readiness of Knox County regarding a major storm or disaster just related to food. The first one on food insecurity, I'm gonna skip the first two pages and really just flip to the recommendations, and I'll just highlight just a couple of those. The first recommendation we came up with is to expand the homeless management information system that Dr. Noe has created to where all food pantries and coalitions are on the same page as far as communicating, coordinating the needs of the county. The second is the need to have just someone who is in charge of all the pantries, the coalitions, the churches, to where there's a coordination amongst all those countywide that we found that, the first question that we were asked when we gave this report was, is does Knox County have enough resources to provide for the homeless, to find, for those food insecure in Knox County? And our specific answer was, yes, there is enough food, but that doesn't mean people knows where it's at, that it's so spread out within the county and the communication and coordination amongst them isn't always there. The next thing I would highlight is that there's a downward spiral of food availability for kids during the summer because they're not in school, that if we can increase the USDA summer feeding during the summer, those sites that the USDA reimburses, that that would help a lot, that the drop-off we have with those kids. The next thing would be, the efforts could be made that mobile meals, thanks to County Commission and City Council, which has been fully funded now, and there's not a waiting list, there, I feel like that there's a lot of other people who could and should be on mobile meals, but either don't have the knowledge or information that it's there or it's available, or they feel that there may be a stigma attached to it. So if it could be a public relations information to those folks, that that would and could apply. The last thing that I would like to mention on the food insecurity report is, over the years, up until about two or three years ago, CAC did a lot of funding for EFH, and some of that staff support has dropped off over the last couple of years. And if that person could have a twenty-hour-a-week, part-time funding to come back and start coordinating a lot of these pantries and situations, that would be very helpful. The other report that we did on food resources in emergency situations, just highlights just a couple of things on there. One thing, and a couple of these, we've already really taken on for this 2007 year to really start working on. The first one is identifying a contact person at the emergency operations center after we met with Alan Lawson, who would be in charge of, if there is a disaster, that's a longer-term disaster, who would be in charge of the food aspect of it. They have people who are in charge of communications and coordination and housing, but actually not food. The second thing, if we could already create a list of, in and around Knox County, where food supplies, major food supplies are, whether it's manufacturers, distributors, grocery stores, and that's one of the things we're gonna start working on in the year 2007 with the help of the Metropolitan Planning Commission and start mapping that out. The next thing that we also suggested is if there could already be created a predetermined feeding sites in basically every neighborhood, that before people get in a panic, when there is a disaster, they would know ahead of time, if something happens in my community, this is where I should go. The next thing that we talked about for the food resources is, now, this is the last one I'll mention on this one, is the importance, if you can get every household to know that the first two to three days, they should be prepared to take care of themselves, if they have food, they have their own water supplies or medicines stored and stocked away until the government or other agencies can start to give them that help. Again, in 2007, our plan is to continue with the food insecurity report that we started on, to do the mapping that are discussed for the areas of food resources and feeding possibilities in and around Knox County. We may go to some surrounding counties like where Hackney is and things like that, to where there's large supplies, as well as continuing to track the wellness, obesity issues, specifically with childhood obesity, that a lot of Knox County government has already been endorsing and doing those programs. And at this point, we'd want to invite everyone, we'll have the 10-carat awards again in December of 2007, you'll get invitations, so I hope some of you are able to come. Thank you for this opportunity.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've read that report, and I always think that government, while they have a lot of responsibility, it's also responsibility of individual families, and your point about keeping a supply of food in individual families, I think is one that ought to be emphasized because, I mean, and it should be more than a couple of days, because a lot of people really have a couple of days of food, but to have food supply in your home that you could weather something that would be for an extended period of time, even to a place where you'd be able to share that with your neighbors, you may have not been so fortunate, but people can build up those supplies over a period of time, and they should have a supply of food as a backup. And that program ought to be emphasized of individuals holding those food supplies to take care of themselves, and they really, their family and their neighborhood, for that. All those points are very worthwhile that you made.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Okay, before we move on, I'd like to acknowledge some guests. We have Superintendent Mullins, Mr. Bob Thomas, Dr. Wright, I think Ron McPherson, and Russ Oaks from the Knox County Schools. Appreciate you being here. Mike Edwards with the Chamber, Sheriff Jones, and I seen registered E. Sherry Witt, and trustee Fred Sis, so good to see all of you. Okay, we're on consent item, tax refund, notary public.
We have 143 applications.
Have a motion to approve?
Oh, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it. Okay, we're on consent calendar.
Page two, Resolution 101. This is a resolution recognized in April 22 through 28, 2007, as National Crime Victims' Rights Week. Page two. Resolution 103 is honoring the University of Tennessee Lady Balls Basketball Team for winning the NCAA Championship. Resolution 401 is approving a contract with Runfro Construction Company, Inc., for hot mix hauling and placement services. Resolution 402 is approving covenants for permanent maintenance of stormwater facilities by H.R. Davis General Construction, Inc., for property located at Autumn Walk on Dry Gap. Resolution 403 is approving covenants for permanent maintenance of stormwater facilities by TTBS Development LLC for property located at Glen at Harden Valley Phase One. Resolution 404 is approving covenants for permanent maintenance of stormwater facilities by Hubert Brothers, G.P., for property known as Unit Three, Cover Bridge Subdivision. Page four. Resolution 405 is approving covenants for permanent maintenance of stormwater facilities for American Fidelity Bank for property known as all of Lots Eight and Nine, Block A of the FW Slade subdivision. Resolution 406 is approving covenants for permanent maintenance of stormwater facilities by Scott and Michelle Williams for property located in Marley Park subdivision. Resolution 407 is approving a lease agreement with Bob Monday for the Carins Convenience Center. Resolution 501 is approving the 2007-2008 Annual Action Plan as part of the 2005 through 2010 Knox County Housing and Community Development Plan. Page five. Resolution 601 is approving a grant agreement in the amount of $348,200 with the State of Tennessee Department of Health to continue the HIV/AIDS Centers of Excellence Care and Management Services Program. Resolution 602 is approving a no-cost contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Health for the provision of studies which evaluate the quality of health care and assesses the effectiveness of policy or other programs designed to improve quality or economy of care, identify populations at high risk of adverse health outcomes, and quantify possible and anticipated adverse or beneficial effects of therapeutic interventions. Resolution 603 is approving a contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Health for the issuance of birth certificates from the birth record database. Resolution 604 is approving a grant agreement in the amount of $55,000 with the State of Tennessee Department of Health for the Tennessee Breast and Cervical Cancer Early Detection Program for fiscal year 2008. Page six. Resolution 605 is approving a grant agreement in the amount of $216,500 with the State of Tennessee Department of Health for local health services for fiscal year 2008. Resolution 701 is approving a lease amendment providing a one-year extension of the lease of the U.S. Cellular Soccer Complex. Resolution 702 is approving a contract with Bridge Construction, Inc., for the Sports Park Complex at the Forks of the Rivers Soccer Complex. Resolution 801 is approving the contract for sale of property located at 4510 Asheville Highway to Chilhawee Hills Baptist Church. Page seven. Resolution 903 is requesting the Commissioner of the Department of Education to answer specific questions regarding public education funding. Resolution 904 is urging support of the contact of Knoxville's federal earmarked request for $500,000 for its reassurance program. And Resolution 906 is approving a grant agreement in the amount of $25,500 with the State of Tennessee for county election official training and voter education.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, move.
Second. Any discussion? Commissioner Lambert?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention on 101, the resolution for Commissioner Knox County to recognize April 22 through 28 as National Crime Victims' Rights Week. I just wanted to take this opportunity to talk about some of the folks out there that are working with victims. I'm sure a lot of folks know that last month, the Monday of the commission meeting, I went in and found that my car lot had been burglarized, and I can't mention their names here, but there's a lot of folks that work for the Knox County Sheriff's Department that don't wear a uniform, and they work very, very hard to see that property is recovered, and thankful to say that at least the expensive stuff, my vehicles were recovered, and I'm not gonna mention their names, but I'd like to honor the officers that are working undercover helping the victims of this county. Crime does not pay in Knox County thanks to these folks.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to add my name to sponsorship of 903. I supported it all along, I just happened to ask a question at the time, we were all coming on as co-sponsors and didn't get listed.
Okay.
Add his name, absolutely.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it. Approval at the previous meeting?
Mr. Chairman?
I've reviewed and move approval. I gave one minor correction that's on page 20 and 21, and is in addition, so I move their approval with that change.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Strickland. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. We're on elections and appointments.
This is Resolution 110, approving the reappointments of Ronnie Davis and Edith McNabb to the Knox County Solid Waste Board.
Intergovernmental?
Intergovernmental voted nine-zero to approve.
Finance Committee?
Finance, nine-zero to approve. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes.
Page eight. This is Resolution 111, confirming appointed directors and their terms for serving on the Industrial Development Board and appointing directors to the Health, Educational, and Housing Facility Board.
Okay, Intergovernmental?
Intergovernmental voted nine-zero to approve.
Finance Committee?
Finance, nine-zero to approve. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Okay, I think we're on Resolution 408, and it should be on page 10, but we had to write it in, so it's not there.
This is a resolution approving covenants for permanent maintenance of stormwater facilities by Sentinel Builders, Inc., for property known as Lot One of Johnstone, Subdivision Unit One.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it.
The next item that was added is Resolution 409. It's a resolution approving covenants for permanent maintenance of stormwater facilities by Don W. Duncan for property known as Lots 70 and 71 of Johnstone, Subdivision Unit One.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it. Ayes have it. I think we're on 802 at the bottom of page 12.
This is a resolution approving an agreement with the City of Knoxville to rescind contract number 04-119 relative to the transfer of real property located on State Street.
Okay, Mr. Law Director, do you want to?
This is a resolution to rescind the agreement that we made with the city some time ago. You have it in your packet. The city has moved this week, I should say last week, last Tuesday night, I believe it was, to rescind the agreement, and this would seal the deal. Basically, we will receive the property back that was the subject of the agreement.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
Any discussion? All in favor, say, oh, Commissioner Kate?
This is the, which property is this, Mr. Law Director?
State Street. This is the State Street property.
State Street, I got you.
And the city has already passed a similar?
They did at their last meeting, and I believe that was Tuesday night, last Tuesday night. And we have, I believe, identified that through our resolution here.
Okay, if there's not any more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We're on page 13, 901.
This is a resolution approving a tax increment finance and provision amendment to the Gay Street redevelopment and urban renewal plan.
Intergovernmental?
Intergovernmental voted 9-0 with no recommendation.
Finance Committee?
Which one is it, Scott?
Top of page 13, 901.
Finance 9-0 to approve.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
Do we have second? Second, Commissioner Lutho, and then Commissioner Lutho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This directed to the law director. I guess a concern that I have is that with this type of structure, other than debt retirement, we would collect no property tax for 15 years. And it looks like this developer here has gone ahead and developed the property, would sell the property, and I'd take at that point would be a payoff of his loan, but for the next 15 years, all that money would be directed towards a payment, but would not that developer be responsible for that loan until the loan is paid off? He might pay it off because he sold all the property right away, or pretty soon. It looks like they have all the money would take off the, pay the loan. The other thing is, is it possible to do less than the full non-debt retirement part to comply?
As far as the last part of that goes, I've got to call into Mark Mamantov, who is, I would call him a local expert on these things.
Yes.
To answer that question, and haven't had a chance to talk with him. Have you all had a chance to talk with him? It was my initial impression that we could do that, but it basically puts you back in a negotiation posture, I take it, with the developer.
Yes, sir. I did have an opportunity to talk to Mark about that issue, and he said as far as he knew, it would have to be the full amount of the TIF, that there's no provision in state law for adjusting that amount. And the second question was?
Well, that was, that was a question, but the first question, the last question was, which is, you just answered, but the first question here is, for some projects, the person is going to be taking a period of time, 15, 20 years, to pay off a loan, and this tax money goes in to retire that loan through time. With this kind of project, this developer, unless he's totally unsuccessful, if they sell these condominiums, would have his money and presumably pay off that part of the loan. How does that operate? Because some of that money through time, Knox County, as we collect the property tax through time from those new owners, would pay towards that debt. So how is that debt held and how is it? Is that person relieved of their responsibility?
No, sir.
But how is that handled?
The developer's not relieved of the responsibility for the entire TIF period. He's on the, he's on the hook for any shortfall that occurs through all the documents that are prepared. And if something happened where a condo owner defaulted, then the bank would take over, and they would be responsible to pay that, those taxes on that particular condo.
Is it your opinion this project would not occur without this approval?
That's my understanding from the developer, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Would you give your name for the record?
Dan Tiller, 901 Broadway, Knoxville's Community Development Corporation.
Dan, do you remember the specific conversation that you had with Mark about reducing the amount of the TIF?
Yes, sir, I do. That was last, I think I talked to him Friday about that particular issue.
He basically just says that there's no way to reduce it, that it's a full amount?
That was his, that was his opinion.
Okay. Could the city reduce theirs and the county reduce theirs to a certain level? That's my question. Whether if we reduce the amount, we would go, it would go back to the city to have another vote to reach their amount as well?
That would, I guess that would be the case. I'm just not sure.
Yeah.
The legal ramifications of that issue, since it's not addressed at all in the TCA.
Right.
Okay, Commissioner Lutho?
Thank you. Just a follow-up of the last question. This developer goes out, borrows money, builds these condos, I believe he's, what, building about 24, is that what?
Twenty, 21 apartments in there.
21, and he sells all 21. Hopefully, he's successful, and he's, I don't know what timeframe he thinks, but let's say it's within the next two, three years. And he's paid, I'm sure he's got a loan from a bank or some financial institution, pays that off. He's got his profit, I'm sure he's got a profit built in there, and that loan has been paid off, and those properties are free and clear of those incumbences, right?
That's correct, but the TIF loan is still outstanding.
The TIF loan is still outstanding, and so the new owners of these properties would still have that against their property? Would that still encumber their property?
Their property would be encumbered by the taxes that they would owe, but the developer is on the hook for any shortfall that might occur.
Once he's sold out?
He's still, he's still, that loan is still in place for the, for the TIF period, which would be 15 years, and the developer's still on the hook for that loan until it's paid off, either by those condo owners or by him.
Well, I'm sure he's got a profit built in, and I'm sure it's more than, than just a couple thou, hundred thousand dollars for selling 21 units. Any idea what he expects those units to sell for?
He is present, if you'd like to speak with him, Jeffrey Nash. My understanding is they'll be from 159 to 380.
Jeffrey Nash, 3012 Whispering Cove Drive, Knoxville, 37922.
Mr. Nash, I assume that you expect to turn a profit off of selling these?
To be honest, we couldn't get any form of bank financing unless we prove that we could.
I don't understand why you need this amount of money from the county and from the, that matter, from the city to make this work. I mean, why is it that you have to seek a TIF?
Because the project shows a shortfall in relationship to the sort of construction loan that we would be provided by a banker. Bankers always look for a particular percentage for the developer, which essentially is for margins of problems that occur during the course of the construction. And when you're redoing a building of this nature, which, as you're all aware, suffered fire damage in 2005, and which has since then been open to the elements, there are enormous problems that we could come across during the course of the reconstruction. The bank insists that there is X margin available within our pro forma before they will even consider granting us the money for reconstruction, and the TIF is what bridges that gap between the margin that the bank are looking for and what the, what the actual development shows prior to that.
Let's say you're successful in this, this project, and we all hope that you are. And I believe you're borrowing somewhere a little over $4 million, or how much is the bank loan for?
The bank loan will be for something like, just in excess of $3 million.
$3 million?
We, the developers, are putting in something in the order of $1 million of our own money as well.
Okay. And if you're successful in selling these, and why is it that the TIF could not be paid off during the same period that the bank loan is being paid off? So that in case he sells these, let's say, over the next three years, how come that, the TIF can't be paid off during, is there a law against that? Or can someone answer that, or?
Well, I can answer that for you.
Okay.
In reality, we as developers would end up, if we paid off this loan immediately, we would actually end up with the same sort of margin as we would end up with if we put our money into a CD. So to be honest with you, the risk that we take in redeveloping a building of this nature is such that we must see a certain margin. The, the period of the TIF, we are still on the hook for making sure that those, that money is all repaid. If during the course of, and if we don't sell all of these properties, any shortfall in, in, in property tax falls back on us, the developers, to make sure that we cover that shortfall.
Bill, did you want to?
Yes, please. Bill Lyons of City of Knoxville. I think probably the best way to look at the TIF loan, I know it is very confusing, is that's part of the financing without which the project just doesn't work at all, and that the, what the developer's doing is getting traditional financing from the bank, putting some of his own money in, and also getting an additional loan that'll be paid back by the taxes that are paid after, after it's sold. Our judgment is, and we have to review these before we recommend them to go forward, is that closes a gap, that TIF loan closes a gap without which the development just could not occur. That's why we've recommended it. That if we don't have that TIF, there's not enough money, the bank will not lend them enough money, and the number, the project is basically upside down. It will not, it will not prove out to produce, even break even, let alone any kind of profit for the developer. So the, once they're sold, all the, the people pay the taxes who buy them, the condominium owners, and they go back into the fund to repay that loan. And the bank has to, of course, accept that they really will sell them all, and they'll sell them at the price that they estimated. So we look at the, our TIF program is, is a gap closer, to close a gap for development that we don't think could happen, that we very much want to happen, to put the building on the tax rolls long-term, and to, you know, get, fix a very bad situation with a very deteriorated building that's unoccupied now. I don't know if that's any clearer or not.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, is if a bank loan can be paid off as these units are sold, how come the, the corresponding TIF that goes to those units could not be paid off as those are sold? Because if, if a bank loan is sold off, let's say in a three or four-year period, okay, they've made their, if they're all sold, they have their profit, okay? Whatever profit margin they're expecting to make, and I don't know how much that is, but usually, usually when you invest money, the higher the risk, the higher a return that you expect to get.
Right.
So if he's got his profit, he's no longer over there constructing, he's no longer an owner of it, he has nothing at risk, why is the county still having to wait a 15-year period to have our part of it paid off?
This city and the county are both waiving the 15-year periods because there is no profit, there's not even a break even unless that money, that loan, is taken on the front end and paid off by the taxes that come in, is basically the answer. That is, the project doesn't work without the TIF. There's no profit, there's not even a break even because of the nature of the challenges of the development. That no bank would loan the difference, and the, and the, the project would not break even.
You're saying the developer doesn't expect a profit?
Without the TIF, no. The developer would not take on this project without the TIF.
No, that's not my question. My question is, does the developer still expect to turn a profit? You just told me no.
He does with the TIF part of the project, yes.
So the only profit he expects to make is the amount of the TIF?
No, that's not, not, not the case. The, the, he's making a reasonable return, giving risk and so forth. What I'm saying is, you can envision that TIF as pay, as, as a amount of the financing of the building. About 12% of the entire development cost is the TIF, or 12 to 15%. That is, that's the amount of dollars the developer will get out to, to finance the construction. And without that TIF, the loan that the TIF will pay off, there would be not enough to construct the building such that, that the developer could even break even.
And Bill, if?
I'd be glad to do a workshop or something on this, because we had one with council. It's pretty hard, and it's pretty complicated, just out of the blue to get this out there.
Well, another point is that the building could stay in the shape it is right now, disrepair for a period of seven or eight, 10 years, or never get fixed, and so we wouldn't receive any taxes other than what it's marked down to as of today.
That exactly correct. And what our concern is, is we doubt this, there will be no increase in taxes, there will be further deterioration, and we've got, all got a big problem demanding services on our hand, but we won't get, we won't even get, but at best, the taxes we're getting today. It's the but-for argument that this project can't move forward without this TIF to make it go forward.
And it fixes an ice sore on Gay Street.
Yes, sir.
Bill, what you're really saying is, he couldn't sell these apartments high enough to pay that $4 million loan off, really is what you're asking.
Well, Mr. Pinkson, is a good point. In order to try to get the numbers to work, the prices you'd have to demand would be so high, nobody would ever buy them, so the bank would say, we're not making the loan.
That's right. That's basically what it boils down to.
Right, yes, sir.
Okay, Craig, you?
I was just trying to do some quick math in my head, and, you know, the average sales price is going to be somewhere around 200, a little over 200,000?
That pretty well what you, right, I mean, assuming the market holds up and everything.
I'm just, he expects the, the average sales price to be somewhere around the 200. I mean, because you, you gave a range of 159 to maybe 300 and something, so maybe, so the average, 225, somewhere in there, times the 21, so that comes a little bit over $4 million. That's what I was asking.
Right.
I wanted to, because my, if I have to reconcile this, and knowing the tight budget that we have coming up, okay, and, and our budgets aren't getting any easier, they seem to be getting harder and harder, you know, I have to reconcile some way that we're giving up potential tax dollars for the next 15 years. I mean, because we're not going to see the, the big increase for 15 years, okay? If these are, these are sold, they're condominiums, I mean, in 15 years, we're going to see a huge bump, but not for 15 years.
Yeah. Let me have one of them. That's true, but you're going to get an immediate bump during the period from the, an immediate bump during that period up to, from 1,800 to 4,700 a year. That would not otherwise happen. So it's not, our looking at it is, and this applies to the city as well as the county, both, you know, both in the same way, this, these dollars are, without this TIF, you're not, the city and the county are going to get the present taxes only. With it, the increase will be quite substantial just for the debt portion, and if the county debt happens to go up, it'll be even, even larger. And then after the TIF period, they'd be extreme. Right. So there'll be, there'll be an increase in tax receipts during that period over what would otherwise happen.
What happens during a reassessment year?
During reass, this should be, well, this?
Would it just be revenue neutral?
Yes, it should be revenue neutral like everything else.
All right.
Okay, Commissioner Ballard?
Yes, I want to ask John something, just about in general TIF, since I don't think a lot of the commissioners here want to do a lot of those, and then I'm going to direct it back to, to the, I guess, the people on the floor. But in reading the literature and answering a few questions since this has came up, generally a TIF, you get your base revenue, probably minus 10% that goes towards debt service. Would that be a fair statement?
There is a provision in it that you, that you don't have to pay because you do have debt service for whatever local government's being concerned.
And then anything over goes to the developer, KCDC, or the financial institute?
What, at the, any particular piece of property within a TIF district receives a letter from KCDC in this particular case, saying that they are out of this particular property, they need to have so much money to be applied towards the debt?
And the reason that we do TIF is for different things, is, say, with Paul District, you have Lowe's, you have restaurants, and you have stuff like that, which he didn't have. Maybe down at North Shore, you have a mixed bag of jobs, commercial, residential, and that turns out real good. But if a piece of property is annexed by the city, then the city gets the sales tax, and they return a certain percent. then the city gets the sales tax, and they return a certain percent, and it's a high percent, 85%, if it's, if it's an annexed piece of property. Would that be true?
It's 70, if it gets annexed, the sales tax does get captured by the, by the, by the city, 72% of which, whether it's in the county or in the city, does go towards education.
So really, even when a piece of property is annexed for the county, if it goes to education, we're sort of in a position that we can swamp dollars? I mean, it goes to education, but that frees up money.
We'll lose 28%.
Well, not the whole, yeah, 28% of the 2.5%, and Commissioner Moore and I made a, he made a great point. We were talking about this the other evening. And, and there may be an opportunity where maybe the city and the county can come together and come up with something where the ground rules are more equitable, and it would not impede doing things like TIFs in the natural growth area. Conversely, they might be able to also be able to cultivate a steady partner for downtown developments because a lot of the things that have been going on downtown have been because of your leadership in issuing TIFs on behalf of the county.
But in a situation like this where we're only talking property tax, once we start a...
We don't lose anything on a property tax.
Okay, but, and listen to Craig say, if we have a building that goes online, a restaurant, then we start gaining the sales tax immediately on that, right?
Yes, sir.
So in a situation like this, without a sales tax kicker incentive, then we're really only looking at to help the development, and I guess, you know, a win-win situation for the developer and the county is get a piece of property and get the property tax on it so we can deliver services to everybody. Or in the general fund. Is that a fair statement?
I think it's a very fair assessment, yes.
Okay, but in this case, the only thing that we're not gaining any property tax because the base we will get, minus a provision for debt service. Okay. So, and I guess it's not exactly heartstrings that are pulled, but if you have a blighted piece of property then, then, you know, you want to clean that up. But, you know, I don't see where that the county is sort of negotiating, or being brought in, or the workshops, or anything like that. Because I went up there and I pulled the public records on this. As I see, that he has bought this piece of property from nine condo owners for $303,000. I also looked at the piece of property next to it, which is half the size, and it is a lot more valuable. And when he does the improvements, this is going to be a lot more valuable to him. Now, is it possible for him to rent these for more than what's being presented? I think so, because in 2002, there are several that was in that building that was sold for $225,000. So if these nicer and improved, I, I would think that he's already knows the numbers, and you all know the numbers on this. And I'm not really sure that a TIF is needed because this also has historical property-type things, and he's going to get incentive from somebody. He, there's no incentive on a historical piece of property?
You have to go through a whole other procedure to get historic tax credits that he's not doing. They'd have to be rental, since these are ownership, there won't be any. But I want to add that if these sell for more, then county tax revenues later will be more because the prop, the taxes will be higher than we're estimating. But we think we have a reason, given the size of these, which are significantly smaller than the ones that were in there.
But if I was to make a, a recommendation that this be done in four years in the, I don't know if the amount, but would be decreased, but that the tax, the TIF ended in 10 years, what harm that would be? And the other thing that really troubles me about this is the note already has been sent in once, and he's looking at April 30th date to either have the financing in place today, or to extend that, or a no-to-be-do. And to me, he already has no capital in it, and he's looking for a lot of breaks.
Oh, he's got significant, they're going to put, what, a million? As part of their development costs in this. And if for some reason it doesn't happen, then this is all, no, and it's like we were never here.
Everybody wants to clean up a blighted piece of property, but what is the city and the county willing to do? It won't cost, and I think you hear concerns from a lot of different people.
I understand that.
And are you saying that the project would fail if we say, "We'd like to see it completed in four years, and the TIF ended in 10?"
I, yes, the numbers we went over were that 15 years of, of the tax paying off that note were necessary to close the gap before a bank would finance it.
No middle ground.
Well, I, I mean, I would say, we could start over with a whole new project, but I, I could let the developers answer that. We'd have to go back through the process. But our reading of it is, this is what the minimum that was required, and no more, than to make this project bankable, so that a bank would make the larger loan, and to make it basically doable. And our risk in that not happening is that the building sit there generating no taxes and being a blight for years. So, and we have to go through that calculus as much as your thinking was. And that was pretty much the number, the 15 years is, is where we came down, is what was.
Well, I think obligation of, of the people here is to, we would like to get rid of the blighted piece of property, and we certainly want a win-win situation. But he's the only one knows how much he's going to make, and that's, I think, what Craig was getting at. And I, I think every development won't take a fallback in case you run into hidden cough rocks, or whatever that it, whatever that it may be. And I don't know that we, that we should supply the safety net and ensure that he makes the top dollar versus the fair dollar. And I think that's what a lot of people up here are talking about.
Well, I could only respond to that as we, we think that there's, there's the element of risk in that, too. I mean, we, nobody knows, if people knew that they could sell, that they could develop, build, and sell, that the market would support that, there'd be a lot more development than there is. I mean, the developer is at risk for this with all the units out there, and that has to enter in the calculation as well. But I understand what the concerns are. They're very much the concerns, they're the same concerns we have. I mean, they're, they're no different.
And as far as it deteriorating anymore, I would, I would suspect that Coates would condemn it, and he'd either have a choice, turn it down, or we'd send him the bill.
Well, that's, that would be a route that, that could happen. But then we have a property that's, you know, that's deteriorated, producing no taxes when that happens. Did you want to?
I wanted to address one question you asked, and that is that the TIF could be paid off sooner because the bank is not going to loan the full amount of the tax increment that would be available. So there will be an excess increment which will be deposited into one of the accounts that we set up with the bank, which means that it could be paid off in 12 years, 11 years, or 10 years.
But when you're talking about sooner, that's still the city and county paying that off. And if I, if the newspaper, where we get a lot of information, is correct, that's over $600,000. That's what was reported.
$600,000 for...
Well, I think what Dan is saying is, if these sell for higher and they generate more taxes, the TIF will be paid off in 10 years, or nine years, or...
What's the amount? What's the amount the city and county, that's going into the TIF payment?
$437,000 is what that part is. And again, if the taxes generate that earlier, and if they, if we're right, and say, everything goes great, then it'll be not a 15-year, but a 12 or 11. It only extends as long as that dollar amount till it's paid off.
But our cost is, is whatever it is today.
But it's for, yes, for fewer years, though, if, if, so I guess it's less if it's paid off sooner, but you're right.
Okay. Commissioner Lambert?
Maybe I'm just, maybe I just understand TIFs better, or maybe I don't. But guys, this is a no-brainer. We don't have to invest any money in this. We don't have to take any money out of our pocket. And we're going to make close to three times what we're making now on the property taxes during the TIF period. And when the TIF period ends, we're looking at a windfall. Now, if I could do this with my personal finances, not put any, any money up, let the developers take all the risk, let the banks take all the risk, and immediately more than double my profits, it'd be a no-brainer. And I think it's a no-brainer, if I understand this correctly, it looks like a no-brainer here. We don't have to put anything into this. And immediately, when the TIF goes into effect, we're getting more than twice what we're getting now. And then at the end of 15 years, we're getting substantially more than what we're getting now. And especially when we look at, I've been through some cities that have, that have not done redevelopment. Now, I don't agree with everything they do. I don't agree with some of the use of eminent domain that, that some municipalities are doing. But I tell you what, I've, I've driven through some cities that look like a bomb had gone off because they didn't do this kind of thing to save their downtown. So when you look at that, it doesn't cost us anything. We're going to more than double our property taxes, and guess what is another benefit? We're going to have a beautiful city to live in. I, I think it's a no-brainer unless there's something I'm not getting here. I intend to vote for this, and I'd like to encourage everyone else to vote for this. I, I think it's going to be good for Knoxville, and it's going to be good for Knox County.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kate?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've dealt with probably 15, 20 of these over the course of my career. Their design, as Mr. Tiller, as Mr. Tiller said, actually is an integral part of the financing package. There is no financing package without this. We're not paying anything to anybody. Our only, and Commissioner Lambert tried, our only deal is to get more money, which if anything, will help our bid a little bit with our budget situation. In addition to that, I would be willing to bet, both of these buildings, this one and the next one, will sit there another 10 years. We've got a developer that's willing to shell out $1 million of his own money to put it in this building and to roll the dice. Now, if he is more successful, Commissioner Lutho, the TIF will be paid off soon. If he's less successful, it'll be paid off in 15 years, but rest assured, it will be paid back. We've got nothing to lose and everything to gain, and I would encourage everybody to support this.
Okay. Commissioner Hammond?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a bit scared because I find myself agreeing with Commissioner Lambert. And so, so I just wanted to say that, that I do agree with what Commissioner Lambert had to say, that, you know, when you have a developer who is willing to come in and take a, a building, which has been burned out, sitting there, giving a $710 a year now, putting up $1 million of their own money, he's taking quite a risk. We don't, he doesn't know that he can sell all these condos. We hope he does, but he doesn't know that. But he's willing to roll the dice, and he is willing to come in and take a risk. And I'm willing to help him with it. And so I'm willing to vote in favor of these because it seems to me that if we can get some good quality condominiums there, and if we do sell out, you're bringing people to downtown. These people probably are either going to move furniture from an existing location, maybe buy furniture. That helps us because we're able to generate revenue off of that. You know, these folks are going to be eating downtown, probably going to Market Square, probably going to the New Regal Cinema, or whatever. But you're going to have people coming downtown, and they're going to be spending money in the downtown district. I see this as a win-win for everybody, and if the gentleman happens to, to make some money off of this, then more power to you. Because the county's going to make money off of this, too. Because when the TIF period is over, as I see these figures, we're looking at 15,000. Right now, we're getting $710. So again, Commissioner Lambert, maybe we could, you know, get together afterwards here and shake hands or something. But nonetheless, I do agree with Commissioner Lambert on this.
That might violate the sunshine law.
Well, as everybody knows, I was the one, this has probably already been over, but I, I was the one who made the motion to defer this last month. And I've done it for one reason, has to get Albert Nance's attention, which I got. I talked to him and John Warner both there about how a lot of these things have been unfair for the county when we go out and put our money in county, and then the city comes out and annexes, we lose our sales tax, the 28 cents that the county gets. We don't lose the 72 cents that the schools get. I don't like that. And I got, I got Alvin's attention, and he, he assured me, and I don't know whether Dan knows this or not, whether he's talked to Dan, that he would look in to trying to make these things a little bit more fair, where there'd be some way we could share our sales tax and things like that. And I talked to Commissioner Warner about that. But this is one thing I am concerned about. I'd like to ask Dan this question. Dan, you said the gentleman is guaranteeing this loan, he'll be on the hook, say, the $4 million. If it likes a million, but being paid off, he has to back that up?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
I would like to know, is this the corporation signing it, and him personally, too?
It would be the, he would be the, I guess, the general partner. It's personal guarantees.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I want. I don't want just a corporation because I know what can happen, they can bankrupt it, and then they're, they're off the hook. They are personally guaranteeing. That's what I want to be sure. I'm going to vote for this, like I told Alvin here, the week before I went on vacation. I'd just done it for that, but I told him I'd support it. But the ones where sale tax are involved, I can't support them unless there's something worked out to support Knox County. Because any time we lose revenue in the county, I represent city and county people both. I have to raise taxes, and the people in the city have to pay them. So we need to work something out on the sales tax part, and that's the only thing I'm interested in.
Okay. Commissioner Strickland?
Chairman, I was going to call for the question.
Second. Second. Larry?
I got a quick question. Dan, in the event of this guy, if he passed away, what, does it pass on? Can it be passed on so the TIF is guaranteed at the end of 15 years? How does that work?
Do you have an answer for that?
Does he need an insurance policy?
There's three, there's three people that have personal guarantees.
Okay.
There's three partners. But, you know, if all three passed away, I, I don't know, I would defer to...
Insurance will take care of that.
Points.
Go on.
But it is not just a limited liability corporation, Dan, they're guaranteeing it personally also. Okay, that's what I want to be sure.
All right, we've had a call for the questions, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it's unanimous. Next item, 902.
This is a resolution approving the downtown north I-275 corridor redevelopment and urban renewal plan containing a tax increment financing provision.
Intergovernmental?
Intergovernmental voted 90 with no recommendation.
Finance committee? Okay, do we have a motion?
Thank you. Chairman?
Okay. Commissioner Lutho?
I'd like, Bill Lyons, again, to assure us that this is the same, had the kind of review that this project would not move forward without this.
Yes, Commissioner Lutho did have it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lutho?
I would just follow that up with, just about everything else you said, except for the, the figures are, are the same on both of these.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it's unanimous. County mayor, did you, you've got a comment? Okay. On page 14, 905.
This is a resolution requesting legislation to allow for an elected school superintendent in Knox County.
Intergovernmental?
Intergovernmental voted 8 to 1 to approve.
Finance committee?
Finance committee, 7 to 2 to approve, and I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No. No.
Who knows?
I guess.
Mark Lerman, Strickland?
Bowless passed.
And Bowless passed. Anybody else?
You called it pretty quick.
16, 4, 2, no's, and one pass.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know we already voted for it, but I wanted to let this body know that in the agreement that the county, this body, and the school board made to stop the fighting, that we wouldn't get in their business. And to me, it seems like that's exactly what we're doing. That's the reason we have the educational consent agreement. We used to vote on everything that they, they would want to do, so it's part of the agreement that we made with the school board. So now we're getting, getting into their personal business, I would say. It would be nothing but the funding mechanism for them.
And we get into it by restricting the, the range of choices.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, 907?
This is a resolution appropriating $62,000 for the lease of the Knox County Clerk's office at Hall Shopping Center.
Intergovernmental?
First off, I wanted to disclose that I do work for the Knox County trustee, and we do have satellite offices in the same location as clerk's office. Intergovernmental voted 90 for no recommendation.
Finance committee?
Finance committee, 90, no recommendation.
Do we have a motion to approve?
No move.
Made by Commissioner Lutho.
Thank you.
Seconded by Commissioner Kate. Any discussion? Commissioner Kate Wood?
I'd like to just make it known that I work for Knox County government, and my husband also works for the Knox County government.
Make it known that my son works in the trustee's office.
I know someone that works there.
And if you read the new sentinel, you know I have some family members that work throughout Knox County government.
And I have the sheriff's office.
And my mother, Knox County trustee's office.
I have a wife that works for the sheriff's office.
And I'm not telling anybody about where I work.
All right, I think we took care of all of that business. We got a motion to approve. Commissioner Hammond, you have a question?
I was just making sure that I understood the, the money is going for facility, or lease, is that right? Lease payments?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I messed that up. There is some work that's being done throughout all the other elected officers, but in this particular case, it is for rent. They had anticipated in their budget so many dollars for rent in all of their facilities. They did... So the $62,000 in this particular case is solely for rent.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. And the motion passes, 908.
This is a resolution urging the East Tennessee Legislative Delegation and all state legislators to oppose Senate Bill 1933, House Bill 1421, and support House Bill 2100, Senate Bill 1572, House Bill 2103, Senate Bill 1716, and House Bill 2091, and Senate Bill 1580.
Intergovernmental?
Intergovernmental voted seven to two for no recommendation.
Finance committee?
90, no recommendation.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Vote approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Mark Harmon.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hammond. Any discussion? Commissioner Hammond.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was brought to you by the Cable TV Committee. It was unanimous in asking you to go on record as urging the Legislative Delegation and the legislature as a whole to vote against this cable TV bill. Basically, what this bill would do is it would give the state the franchising authority, and it would take it away from the local governments. I passed around to you a list of the fees which we have received in Knox County in fiscal year four and five, and it amounts to $3.9 million. Mr. Warner was also kind enough to tell me that last week Comcast gave Knox County a check for $1.9 million, which was good for fiscal year '06. So you add 1.9 to that 3.9, and that's, what, about 5.8? So that gives you an example of the type of fees that we're getting from the cable TV industry. Taking this away and taking it Nashville, even though I understand that there is a provision in the bill which would keep the money local, can you say 911? Do you remember when we were supposed to get funds from 911, and they decided they weren't going to give it to us? All they have to do is come back and say, hey, let's change the bill. And if you're looking at $5.8 million from Knox County, do the math, 95 counties and municipalities across the state, you're talking about a lot of money. If the state can get its hands on that, I think will, or at least a large portion of it. We will have to make up that revenue somewhere. Secondly, taking it away from, taking the authority away from local governments means that if someone has a complaint about their cable TV service right now, they can bring it to the Cable TV Committee. I don't think they want to go to Nashville if they have any types of complaints. And thirdly, because this is in limbo in Nashville, it's hampering our ability to negotiate a contract with the cable companies, as Mr. Owings told our finance committee last time. So those are just a few of the reasons that we would encourage you to vote for this, and let's send a message to Nashville that we are opposed to this. I would also add that the Mayor's Association across the state is against it, the County Commission Association across the state is against it, several municipalities have already passed similar resolutions, and I would ask that we follow suit.
Thank you. Commissioner Kate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From watching what's happened over the years past, it seems to me when money goes from Knox County into the central time zone, we never get it back. Yeah, BE, say BEP. Plus the local control issue, I think this is an important piece of legislation. Thanks.
Mark Harmon.
Thank you. It's an old riddle. If you call a tail a leg, how many legs does a dog have? It's not five, it's four, because calling a tail a leg doesn't make it a leg. And calling a bill competitive doesn't make it competitive. ATT is out there saying that this is going to need competition. Maybe, but we doubt it. Let's look at the brief history of this sucker. We have cable franchises. It is an agreement, it is a contract, it is saying, it's an easement. It says, you are allowed to use our rights-of-way to wire our community. In exchange, we expect the following things. It's government at its best, and it's government at the local level where we are directly in touch with people. What happened? The ink was barely dry on these agreements when certain companies went to Congress and said, well, deregulate the rates in those agreements because competition's coming along, and you won't need them, and the rates will go down. And after that, the rates went up at two to three times the rate of inflation. Then in '96, we had a telecom act, and again, big companies went to Congress and said, deregulate the ownership's provisions in those acts because you don't need it, fantastic new stuff is coming along, and prices go down, and rates went up at two to three times the rate of inflation. And now it goes down to the local, state level, and then some companies go to Nashville and say, get rid of the provisions for the franchising agreements and the franchise fees. Send them out to Nashville, and maybe they'll come back, and maybe there'll be more if more people buy stuff. Do we even have an expression for fool me thrice? This is not a competitive bill. What this is, is ATT and its lobbyists getting their way. Murfreesboro, Cleveland, Shelbyville, Irwin, Franklin, the Tennessee Municipal League, the Tennessee County Services Association, all oppose this bill. It doesn't have build-out provisions. The big company, ATT, can cherry-pick neighborhoods and leave others underserved. We've already talked about the franchise fees. Also, it would nearly, almost on guaranteed, destroy public access by putting it on a higher tier and eliminating most of the systems by which it is financed. So for several good reasons, some of which Commissioner Hammond has already outlined, these bills are a bad deal, and they need to be defeated.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lambert.
I just wanted to say there must be a full moon out there or something, because I actually agree with Mr. Hammond and Mr. Mark Harmon. Encourage everyone to vote for this.
Commissioner Pinkston.
Spirit of cooperation.
I can agree with you on this, but there's one thing I would like to say, and especially to you, Mr. Hammond, since you're the chairman of the Cable Committee. We need to do something. Mr. Harmon made a point there about how AT&amp;T and even would cherry-pick. We've been here, I think cable TV's been here since the 70s, mid-'70s, they're still cherry-picking. We have a lot of people that can't get cable TV, and they've been here for 30 years. So we need to do something about that, and I don't know how we can control their rates, but I get more complaints on dirty lots and cable TV than I believe I do anything. People complaining about how it keeps going up, and people wanting it and can't get it. So the next time we come up with this franchise thing, we need to make them do something to give these people out here, not cherry-picks what I'm trying to say, Mr. Harmon, and you know good and well that they do cherry-pick.
And analogy, too.
Yeah, they sure do. And most of them in the city because their houses are closer together, and it's easier for them to service them. But I just think we need to be a little strict on them, and I'm looking for you to give us that leadership, Mr. Hammond.
Well, thank you, Ms. Pinkston, and this is one of the things that we were talking about in our committee. One of the things we're working with the law director on is as we do these new agreements, those are one of the, that's one of the things we're really focusing on. Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion to approve. I don't see any more lights on.
It's been seconded.
It's been seconded. So if we're ready to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it's unanimous. We're on page 15, ordinances on second reading, 102.
This is an ordinance approving regulations for flood damage prevention.
Intergovernmental?
Intergovernmental voted 90 with approval with an amendment.
Finance committee?
Finance committee voted 90 with approval.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Ayes have it. We're on page 16, 104.
This is an ordinance amending Article III of the Knox County Procurement Code as previously adopted by O-05-4-101 on May 23, 2005.
Intergovernmental?
Intergovernmental voted 90 for approval.
Finance committee?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and motion passes. Okay, we're on public forum. Is Shannon Sito, is she present? Okay, what about Laura Cole? Okay, what about Barbara Cook?
Yeah, she kind of thinks.
Ms. Cook, if you'll give your name and address for the record, please. You have up to five minutes.
My name is Barbara Cook. I live at 4221 Chincapin Lane, 37921. Honored commissioners, your honor, fellow citizens, employees of Knox County, I'm here this afternoon to talk to you about two subjects. The first relates to a decision made by the Knox County Retirement and Pension Board regarding social security withholding on the present mandatory retirement plan employee contribution. The second is how employees are informed of decisions made by the board that affect them. I really don't relish being here, bringing this to you. After speaking with my supervisor, an employee representative, Mr. John Williams, my commissioner, Ivan Harmon, and addressing the Retirement and Pension Board this morning without a solution, I bring the matter to you, hoping that you will direct the appropriate process to resolve this. An opinion has been rendered by Bill Mason, an attorney, I believe he's an attorney, working for the Retirement Board. The tax laws dictate that Knox County should be reporting as income the 6% mandatory withholding to social security. Knox County and the employees should be paying at least FICA tax on that amount, and that 6% should be reported as earnings in the employee's social security retirement account, which is used in the formula for calculating retirement, disability, and survivor's benefits. I'm not sure when the opinion was rendered, but I believe it was late last year or early this year. I was told the board voted in March that withholding of FICA should begin in January 2008. Only a handful of people know about this, and I'm not sure if anyone knows how long Knox County has been out of compliance with tax law. I have no idea whether anyone has even been given the task to find out. I would like to believe, I wouldn't have to point out the implications of this. Hundreds of employees' social security retirement accounts understated for how long? Who knows? But then if a decision could be made to postpone until next year, correcting an out-of-compliance condition of this magnitude without any plan to investigate potential liability for previous years with no communication to the employees, I'm guessing some folks don't understand. So I'm here to let you know, I choose not to wait until next year to do what is right. I respectfully request you instruct Knox County to immediately begin withholding on and reporting of the 6% mandatory retirement amount, and to make up whatever FICA has been missed this year. Further, I ask you to request an examination of previous year's tax laws to determine what further action is required. A complete audit from a tax law perspective would go a long way to increasing the confidence of employees that their income is being properly reported and taxed. I also request you to direct the Retirement Department of Knox County to immediately and regularly update the employees on all decisions made by the board that impact all employees, including this subject. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Okay, that's all we have on our agenda. Were we in recess?
Wait a minute, I mean, Mr. Chairman, I don't know what's going on. I guess I'm in the dark on this. What she says to me sounds very serious and something that we need, do not need to take lightly. But again, I'm in the dark, and I guess I'm just asking for clarification on what's going on.
Commissioner, we had a meeting this morning, and I directed Bill Mason to get with Ms. Cook and find out, make sure we are compliant with the tax laws, and he will do that this month and report back to the Pension Board next in May. So we'll have an answer to you by next month.
Could I ask a question of you, Commissioner Harmon?
Ask.
Is this what the Retirement Board does, or is this through the county finance thing of what's being done?
This is what, you know, Bill Mason and Mr. Beeler's going to find out for us, and I don't know, we may have to get with John Warner. I mean, it was hit to us earlier, so I think we just need to get the attorneys together, find and make sure we are in compliance.
Okay, Mr. Warner, do you want to comment on it?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Ballou?
Laura Cole's in the building in another meeting, and she's trying to get down if it would be okay after the recess, let her, maybe let her talk before zonings. It don't look like we have a lot there today.
We have no objections to that. Yeah, well, she called and canceled, says she cannot.
Ms. Fields was at the stormwater hearing the other night, and I think, I won't swear to this, but I think she got her problem solved.
I don't know if she got her problem. I think I seen her on the front page of a local newspaper, but.
Well, it was alleged it would be solved.
So we're in recess until 4 o'clock.